Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And with that, can we get a roll call, please?
Madam Mayor, we have no requests under Roll Call Item A, so I'll go ahead and do the roll call. Councilmember Cunningham.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Lance.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
And Mayor O'Connell. Here. Thank you. And can we get a report out from closed session, please?
Council considered two items. On one, they provided direction on a claim, and in the second, they've got an update with regards to litigation.
Thank you. And then, on the agenda, I would like to move Item Q and R up in the order to before Item N. And then I'd also like to close in memory of Alex Reisman. And if I can get a first and a second for that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And that will move us to proclamations. So, this is the City of Brisbane Proclamation, celebrating June 2024 as Pride Month. Whereas the City Council of the City of Brisbane recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2024 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ Pride Month throughout the City of Brisbane. And whereas the City of Brisbane is the only city in the county that flies the Progress Prize flag all year long to honor the history of the LGBTQ liberation movement and to support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ individuals have had immeasurable impact on the cultural, civic, and economic success of our community. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to indiscrimination and prejudice. And now therefore be it resolved that the City of Brisbane hereby proclaims the month of June 2024 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ community and in recognition of all LGBTQ residents who influence, whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make the City of Brisbane a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. And that is signed by me, Terry O'Connell, and accepting this proclamation via Zoom this evening is Sandeep Patel, Planning Commissioner. Would you like to say a few words, Sandeep?
Thank you so much, Mayor O'Connell. My name is Sandeep Patel, and I'm here on behalf of my husband, Brandon, to accept the proclamation. Brandon regrets that he can't be here with us tonight because he is in Europe, and I think it's 3:00 AM there. He wrote a little something for me to read to you, and so I'll just read his words. He said, "Thank you, Mayor O'Connell, and the Brisbane City Council, and to the City of Brisbane for recognizing and proclaiming June as Pride Month. This really is the best city on the Bay. As a registered nurse in public health and a teacher, Brandon is deeply committed to community health, safety, and well-being. He is proud to call Brisbane our home, a community that embraces all its residents and celebrates their diverse skills, talents, and achievements. Brandon is deeply honored to receive the City Council's proclamation of June 2024 as Pride Month in the City of Brisbane. Thank you."
Thank you.
Thanks, Sandeep.
And I hope he has a wonderful vacation in Europe.
Thanks, Sandeep.
Thank you. And that moves us to our next proclamation, which is celebrating June 19, 2024, as Juneteenth. Whereas on June 19, 1865, two and a half years after President Lincoln's emancipation proclamation, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas with news that the Civil War was over and that the enslaved were now free. And whereas Juneteenth is a chance to celebrate human freedom, reflect on the ongoing legacy of slavery, and an opportunity to dedicate ourselves to rooting out racism, and remember our extraordinary capacity to heal, hope, and emerge from our worst moments with purpose and resolve as a stronger, freer, and more just community, and celebrate the power and resilience of Black Americans. Whereas we commit to our shared work to ensure racial justice, equity, and equality, and honor the tireless work of abolitionists, activists, educators, business leaders, civil right leaders, and public officials who have made it their mission to reconcile our past to build and deliver a thriving society for all Americans. Now therefore be it resolved that City Council hereby observes Juneteenth on June 19, 2024. Let us celebrate and acknowledge Juneteenth as a day for all Americans to commit to our collective prosperity and humanity." Joining us today to accept the Juneteenth proclamation is Brisbane's own Kweta Highsmith. Kweta has been a resident of Brisbane for the past 14 years. She's Vice President and Chief Diversity Officer at Genentech. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor O'Connell, Brisbane City Council, all of our community. I'm Kweta Highsmith, as the mayor said. And Juneteenth is about recognizing the truth, right? Juneteenth marks the day in history where enslaved people from Galveston, as you mentioned, received word that they were finally freed by the executive decree. The news came two years later, right? When all the people were supposed to be freed. Juneteenth is about the real truth about freedom and accountability, both essential to inclusion. We love Brisbane, and we believe Brisbane is one of the most inclusive cities we've ever lived in. My husband and I, Quincy, we've lived in six states and Washington DC. And the street that we live on in Brisbane is the most diverse street we have ever lived on. We have Asian, we have Indian, we have Black, we have White, we have Hispanic. It is like the, really, the true rainbow melting pot of the world, is on San Diego Court. So, let this for us not just be a moment talking about inclusion, but really be a movement with Brisbane being proactive, building community, magnifying the efforts as change agents for a better future for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and accept your proclamation?
Thank you.
We gotta get the picture.
Yes.
Hold on, one more, one more.
Move pictures.
Somebody else. Okay, so now we are going to get down to our regular business, and we're going to start with oral communications number one. This is where members of the public wishing to make comments on an item not on the agenda have the opportunity to speak. And I've got two slips for this at this moment, and one, the first one is from Jonathan Scharfman. Would you like to come up? And you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Greetings, Madam Mayor and Council. I bet you're wondering why I've come for the first time in five years to see you.
Exactly.
Well, it was courteous of you to inquire. I'm actually, I'm actually here because I just, in my entrepreneurial life of late, I've come up with this great prototype that I just thought maybe we could squeeze in a little bit of an introduction to before we get to consent calendar, because you're not going to need too long before you say yea to this. It's really going to be a great proposal for the City of Brisbane, really. It, you know, it may involve autonomous transport, electrification, and the like, but seriously, I have come here tonight for the first time in a couple of years because I'm going to be out of the country in Europe in the next couple of weeks, and I understand you're losing one of your own to retirement in a couple of weeks, and I couldn't pass the opportunity to honor this guy over here. So that's why I'm here. My, the best and worst years of my professional life were spent at the foot of this man who was representing, always representing, the best interests of this city. We, we had our differences, we had our disagreements, many knockdowns, one after another, after another, year after year after year, in fact. Some of, some of which actually, I think, earned us each special nicknames that can't be shared here, because it's a public forum, maybe family-friendly forum, but, but for all the years that I represented the Baylands and UPC's interests here in the city, regardless of our differences, this gent over here was always the consummate professional. And you were always, especially those of you in these chairs, and it's great to see that the consistency is just amazing, your service to the community as well. He was always fighting for you, like, not just for the community, but to protect you from having to do some of the harder, harder work of governing. And, and it was always with the best interests of the community and the best interest in the city at heart that this guy did his job. And I particularly respected, even though it cost more than I would ever, ever wish on any company I'd ever worked for, some considerable resources, the fiscal decisions through the years that I was involved in working with the city here were really, really solid, and they really deserve respect statewide. I mean, what, and a lot of the decisions that were made, I think, have earned Brisbane respect. And, and it's largely because of this guy and his stewardship. And, you know, the longest-serving city manager in California history, right here. That's incredible. It's incredible. And I just, you know, soon the binds of public service are going to be off of you, and you'll have so many choices. And, you know, you might want to consider in the future, you might think about, you know, joining another team, like, thinking about...
The dark side.
Coming over to the dark side. Oh my God. And should you choose to do that? You know where we're reaching, and we can talk about it.
Oh, no.
Oh, watch out, Obi-Wan Kenobi.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thanks, Jonathan. That was good.
Okay. We have a member of the public, I don't have a name, that wanted to speak about the Brisbane Acres.
Is that an item, though?
No, not on an item for the agenda. This is just...
Well, I mean, it might be. Somebody alerted me to something going on about residencies and the Brisbane Acres being treated as an entity rather than the fact that there are lots in the Acres that were always treated as regular residential lots in the city. But now there have been onerous conditions set on, and it was meant to stop any kind of residential development on existing streets with existing utilities, everything in place except they fall under the, what, the designation of Brisbane Acres. It's the only difference. They were always treated, in fact, the night, the night the attorney jumped up, when a bunch of people from the Acres showed up to apply or to talk about development up there, that he jumped up and said, "We're going to have to treat the Acres separately." And it's going to, but it's not separate. There's no slope difference in the Brisbane, on Paul and Margaret, any different from King's Road, from Humboldt Road to Larry. You show me where the differences are. But it was done to stop because some people, there are some people with messianic environmental ideas that say, "Hey, we really like your acre up there, Ron, and we'd like that for open space." Or the other people that are hoping to build and bought with the hope of building later, now they're going, they're finding out, well, there's not much of a market when they come down to the city and find out. Hey, forget it. What you bought under the understanding that there would be, and I know the people that bought it many, many decades ago. So, I, I don't, I'm, since I never received anything in, you know, informing me of there was going to be additional conditions put upon people up there, I have not, follow, I've got to, in other words, I've got to inform myself of where the things stand right now at the city. I know the intentions of many people in the city are to make the land up there, the vacant lots, as open space.
Well, that, okay, this is something that is potentially, maybe your concerns are on our agenda and maybe they're not. I did, we did move that item up, so if you want to have a seat, we will explain what the item on our agenda is.
It's Item R.
Q.
It's Item Q.
Q.
Q. And it will be coming up shortly, and you can hear what staff has to say on that, and then respond if you wish.
Okay. Well, I wasn't certain whether it was on the agenda, so now that I know...
Well, I'm not sure with your description if, if it is, but if it is, you'll certainly have the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members, other members of the public who'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda? I see no other hands and have no other slips. Do we have anyone online that would like to speak?
There are no hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar, Items D through, D through M. Can I get a motion to approve Items D through M?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much. And then we are going to move on to Item Q, which is to consider induction, introduction of an ordinance approving zoning text and map amendment, 2004 RZ1 overlay to R1 Residential District and the residential Brisbane Acres Residential District in its entirety. And I would like to say that at this time, I would like to get a staff report, and we will take public comments. At that point, I am going to ask for this item to be continued until the, I believe, the July 18 meeting, because I feel that the public needs a little more awareness, and I feel that I need some more awareness on this item. So, we will be taking comments from the public, but then I'm going to try to, with the approval from the council, continue this item to the June 18 meeting.
Try.
So, I'm sorry, July 18th. Let's not give ourselves an extra meeting. So if, with that, can we get a staff report, please? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. You're aware that California Senate Bill SB9 was approved and became effective in January of 2022, and the bill basically required jurisdictions statewide to allow for two residential units on a single-family lot, or to allow a single-family lot to be split into two lots that could be developed individually. So, those provisions that were applied statewide apply to everybody in the state right now, all jurisdictions, including Brisbane, irrespective of whether or not we move forward with the zoning text amendment. So again, those, those provisions have been in effect since 2022. I believe there have been about four applications that have been filed in the city subsequent to that date. So again, why are we moving forward with this? I mean, it is a state requirement. There's no obligation on the part of the city to address it in our own zoning ordinance. There are a couple of reasons. One is we did indicate in our housing element that we would move forward with amending our ordinance to reflect the requirements of the state law. And the other main reason was the only standards the city can apply are objective development standards that we've adopted. And absent any development standards that are unique to this particular form of development, we can't apply anything above the standard zoning requirements and what the state allows. So you'll see there are a couple of instances where we think that is problematic for the community to, you know, go by the state standards in their literal form. So that's kind of a couple of the reasons we're moving forward with this ordinance in the form. Then again, applies to any districts that allow residential uses or single-family residential uses. So in Brisbane, that would be the R1 zone, and as the gentleman earlier was indicating, the RBA zoning district. So these are state requirements applied to both of those zoning districts currently. So again, the zoning text amendment we're proposing would also address those two zoning districts. So I can quickly highlight some of the, the main, a couple of issues. One is the, the discussion of the ordinance itself was subject to a number of Planning Commission workshops, 23 through 24. I think we held three or four workshops with the Planning Commission to kind of work through the proposed regulations. And by a vote of 4-0, unanimous vote, the Commission did recommend adoption of the ordinance in May of this year. And all their background materials are attached to the staff report, available online as well as in the written report. So again, the, the fundamental sort of difference or the, the impacts of this particular state requirement or state regulations for, essentially now, on a residential lot, you can have a single-family residence, and you may have up to two accessory dwelling units allowed as part of that same development. So theoretically, right now, on a single-family or a lot in the RBA, you could have a single-family dwelling and two ADUs. So that would be kind of the current status in terms of theoretical yield on residential lots. Under this new ordinance and under the state law, basically, under that same parcel, you could develop up to four units, including some various combinations of main dwelling units and ADUs. So where before the theoretical maximum yield was three, one main house and two ADUs, now you could have four within that same footprint. And that applies to both adding a unit to an existing lot or subdividing the lot, so, because we were looking at the underlying footprint. So if you had one parcel and you decide to split it, you could still only have a maximum of four units within that larger footprint of the two lots. If you kept the lot as it is and decided, well, I'm going to build multiple units on that single lot, you could still only get the four by a combination of ADUs and main dwelling units. So, in terms of the, the mathematical difference, in terms of what it makes in terms of development potential of lots, that is kind of the basic math involved, and it's kind of complicated, and Brisbane, the lots are somewhat unique. So not every lot can achieve the theoretical maximums that we're talking about, but that's kind of the overarching, overarching sort of effect of the ordinance in terms of the amount of units that can be built on lots. So, and I can hold questions for later. I can take questions now. It's up to the council's pleasure.
What would be the council's pleasure? Would you like to ask questions of staff at this time?
We can, I will, I will have probably more questions also.
Okay.
Next time. So I don't want it to, like, as long as we're prepared to allow continued questions.
Yes, we would, we would allow continued questions and continued public hearing when we reconvene this, and, and we aren't on a time deadline that's going to make a difference for having it on July 18th.
Understand. Okay, so I'll just finish my presentation then. So some of the primary provisions, as allowed by the state law, are that you have to allow a 800-square-foot dwelling unit, so your development standards still have to allow for a unit that's 800 square feet in size. The district lot coverage limits can't be used to restrict the unit to less than that size. The required side and rear yard setbacks per state law are four feet, and no more than one off-street parking space can be required per unit under state law. And then the other, for the urban lot splits, if you're going to split a lot, they have to be relatively uniform in size. You have to kind of do a 50-50 split or no more than a 60-40 size differential between the two lots you're creating. So, again, there are some fairly tight constraints the state has imposed, but we think there are a couple of objective standards we can impose that would, I think, improve the quality or the, reduce the impact of these developments. And one is that although the state requires a four-foot setback, we can restrict the height in the area between the city's standard setback and that four feet. So we can actually require a lower height for any portion of the building that encroaches. Say, if the city's setback was 10 feet, any portion of the building that is between 10 feet and four feet, we can require a lower building height. We would not be able to do that unless we adopt an ordinance of this form, otherwise the four-foot would... Otherwise, the four-foot would, would be the only standard, and it would have to be whatever the height of is allowed in the zoning district. So, so that's what we think is one public benefit or one benefit of the objective standards we can um adopt as part of this. The other is, and it was the planning commissions, I think a, a good idea is, they required, and we're requiring in the ordinance, that the required parking be an open parking space, not a, not a garage space, so it could be a carport or open. The concern the commission raises is that, obviously, with driveway, more driveways, you're probably going to be taking away street parking, you know, where in these lots that are developed. And, and there's always that historic concern about being garage, garages being used for something other than parking their vehicles. So by making the required parking open, the, we believe that we're more likely to uh allow for space on these individual lots next to be used for parking and hopefully be less of a, a drain on, on street parking. So that is a, again, a requirement, uh, it's under the ordinance as, as recommended. And then the height limit, I think I talked about that already. Couple other issues that have come up. One is the applicability in general uh under the state law, and we've carried it forward in our ordinance, that there are certain criteria to be eligible for an SB9 development. And I think the one I wanted to highlight is that if there are lots that have um, are occupied with um habitat for endangered species, they're not eligible for an SB9 development of any type. That's an exclusion, so that's written into the ordinance and is carried forward from state law. So that's written into the ordinance, so if you did have a lot that has a butterfly habitat, you would not be able to exercise the SB9 provisions. And then the other issue that's come up is, you, you've all heard about some litigation in Southern California regarding the uh SB9's legality, and um it was found by a trial court in Southern California to be not applicable to a s- a small number of charter cities in Southern California. Uh, we've consulted with the city attorney, and since Brisbane is not within the geographic area, and Brisbane is not a charter city, we're a general law city, that lawsuit has no relevance or bearing on the applicability of SB9 to, to the city of Brisbane. So we are still bound by the requirements of SB9 um at the current time. So I'm sure the city attorney can address that further. Uh, with that, I will um entertain any questions you have.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead, let's just try to keep them a little basic and give us some fact-finding for next time.
Exactly. You know, John, um, so the, the split lot uh option that someone can use. So i- if, if someone splits their 2,500-square-foot lot into two 1250 um lots, and they build a house on each one, could they sell one of the houses and, because the split lot is separate?
They can, there are some requirements so that they maintain uh the um, they have to, they have an obligation to maintain residency on one of the lots for some number of years. That's again, a condition of the SB9 law that we've carried forward in the ordinance.
Got it, okay, so there are, okay, that, that's good to know. And then, you know, in the staff report, it talks about since January 2022, that the city has had four such applicants submitted, two for urban lot splits and two for two-unit development. So I'm just kind of curious, like, okay, this is already occurring, yet we have this before us. So can you kind of provide some clarity there?
Again, as I mentioned, right now, the law applies to all property in Brisbane. The state law um applies, whether or not our ordinances or regulations recognize it, acknowledge it. So we by law are obligated to process those applications under the current situation. Our goal is to, one, clarify the requirements, and two, add some objective standards which we think are appropriate and reasonable and that we can't impose under the state's blanket regulations.
Got it, got it. Okay, so right now, um, because these are state requirements, we are subjected to those state requirements, and until we a- apply our own zoning that makes us in compliance with the state law, um, we're just subjected to whatever the state is, state law requirements are. But we can apply some of our own uh unique situations to our own zoning.
Yeah, we can adopt objective standards, like we did with the other, you know, we've done this in other zoning districts, that we can impose. You can't, on a discretionary basis or a case-by-case basis, decide, well, we can do this or that. We have to be able to apply them, they have to be applied uniformly and um adopted in a standard form.
Okay, th- thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm going to reserve my questions and comments till July. Um, what I would ask staff though is, this is so complicated to read for people who do this stuff all the time. Is there anything we can do to make it simpler for the public to understand that this is not something we're just putting on them that we're required to do that, but we can protect ourselves from egregious behavior somewhat?
Yeah, I understand, and we will work on trying to put together some fact sheets or something that are a little more intelligible. This, this is not easy material to get through, it's pretty dense, and, you know, I appreciate the difficulty it is to wade through this. So we'll work on coming up with something more simple.
And more examples.
Yeah, tha- thanks, John. I, I, I just think it's like, I'm not a lawyer, and I feel like I need to be a lawyer to even understand page one.
Or maybe like even some, like, when you talk about examples, like maybe some visuals.
Yeah, some scenarios.
Visual examples.
Thank you, Colleen.
I promised to bring lots of questions the next time this comes up, and I would echo everything that's been said. I think that some visuals would make a big difference. It, it's easier to absorb. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I'm, I'm going to open this up for public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment? We will keep those in mind and bring them forward later. Please, Paul.
Paul Biscal, Brisbane Residence. Thank you, council. Um, I was wondering if we could get page 18 of that um packet, which has the map on it, the draft zoning map.
What's the number on the top of the map, Paul?
Well, on the top?
Yeah. It's page 127.
Uh, attachment two?
Thank you.
Okay, can we bring it up on the?
It's 127 in our packet, and it's page 18 under this.
You didn't start my time yet, did you?
Page eight. I, I, I don't control the button, but, but you know, honestly.
I figured you'd let Jonathan go on and on, so cut me some slack.
Honestly, I think this is an important enough topic that I, unless.
It is, it is very important.
Unless we get.
No, it's really important.
People start just really running on, I'm not going to try to give you the floor for the time you need.
It's important.
Okay.
Okay, so um I have a, a serious concern. Uh, it has nothing to do with what Jonathan just mentioned regarding uh Brisbane proper that's already developed. It has to do with the Brisbane Acres. And if you look at your map on the uh open space category, it's only on the ridge that's highlighted open space in green, the areas between the developments on the ridge. Okay, and that's, that's not my concern. My concern is the Brisbane Acres. And the Brisbane Acres doesn't say open space, although open space doesn't mean anything more than public property. But what my concern is, is that now we have a grid in the Brisbane Acres, and it's called the Brisbane Acres Residential District. Okay, those aren't the density transfer properties. These are properties that were purchased, for the most part, with matching grants from the Coastal Conservancy and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And both of those agencies have a provision that allows the city of Brisbane to pay back that money that was the matching funds. As long as the city pays them back, they would allow a governing body, which is five of you, and it would just take three of you to vote that you want to develop the Brisbane Acres. Now, it's been said that those are, have been put into, on the deed into open space. All it means is public property, it doesn't mean protected. So we need to make sure that these acres that were purchased are protected open space. And what's most concerning to me, if you look at the open space plan, is that the city of Brisbane owns two lots that are marked for the water department. They're marked in blue, and they're way up in the acres. The only need for this town to have water tanks further up in the hill would be to support a, I would call it, a southeast ridge. This town doesn't have the infrastructure to lead a whole new development's worth of houses up in the acres. So, this map doesn't indicate open space in the acres anymore. Okay, and so it's vulnerable, and it's talking about a whole new district, Brisbane Acres District. So, we need to get on those deeds, we need to make sure they're protected open space. And, for the life of me, and I understand what cities gain from having big developments done, and to Ron's point about people in the acres, most of those lots aren't developable by the, the average person, unless you were a billionaire or a developer, and you're going to be bringing all the infrastructure that's needed to go up into the acres. So please, uh, of all the things, like Jonathan says, we have control over the heights. We have control over certain things that we could do in what's expected of the new housing opportunities. But as far as the Brisbane Acres go, please, do everything you can to make sure we don't go down that path. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Can I ask a question first, John?
Of course.
Does staff want to respond to Paul's interpretation of the map?
Let me just to clarify, Brisbane Acres is an existing zoning district, right? It's a, it's a zoning map, it doesn't reflect ownership, and it doesn't reflect whatever parcels may be and constrained by open space restrictions, is a zoning district overlay. Obviously, lots are owned by the city, they're not going to be residentially developed, unless the city wants to rezone some specific parcels. You know, that would be the way to probably address the concern, but they fall within this larger um RBA zoning district. We're not changing that zoning district, there's no changes to it proposed as part of this. All we're putting is that overlay with these different development standards, so it's very clear. If you want to develop um in, with this two-lot or two-unit form, that these are the development standards that are uniquely applicable to that form of development. And again, the state regulations apply to any district that allows single-family residential um uses, and that would be RBA and R1, so. So, right now, the RBA zone does allow single-family residences. So it's subject to the state requirements, that's why we captured it as part of this particular zoning overlay to be able to impose our limitations and restrictions on subsequent development.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Having no slips and seeing no hands raised, I will ask if there's any members of the public online that would like to speak.
Madam Mayor, I see no hands raised at this time.
Yes.
Yes. Sure, please, please come up.
Yeah, I got so many things swimming in my head right now from things that have been brought up in the past that have been left, left to justate and get, until this time, when I finally heard that there was something afoot about the Brisbane Acres being considered as one entity, zoning one, zoning entity. But the, you know, to me, you know, the, and what the planner, I, uh, said.
John.
Pardon?
John.
Oh, John, John, uh, what he said regarding the uh, what the state law says, if there's any kind of environmental designation as being butterfly habitat. I mean, this is only one of a dozen things I'd like to talk about, and I'm not going to go there today or tonight, but I'm going to have to work on this. See, the, if you, if you read any of the EIR and some of the stuff that had gone on back then, they have, whoever's imagination was working on this, they've got flight paths for the butterfly, weigh stations, uh, landing strips. You know, you, I mean, and any property in Brisbane that was incorporated into this endangered uh insect is make-believe. I mean, this is like dollhouse environmentalism. Who, who, who says, oh, I think we should have, do you think there's any lot in Brisbane taken away from this designation that the species would die? You know, I mean, it's just crazy stuff, you know, they, they came up with the butterflies to beat the original, the original developer, there's, for San Bruno Mountain. And that's fine, you know, there was no designation, there were no expectations. But here, I mean, there are people that own lots in town, and whether that's a lot that's been incorporated, if it's on an existing street that has utilities, that nobody could have bought without expecting to be able to, to do something with it later, why is it being, why would that be allowed to even be considered? I mean, it's, so the uh, so is that just one of, of, I, I think I lost a couple of my points, I should have been taking notes. But it's just a whole, whole, I know people that bought lots up there on Paul in the 70s, saying it was so beau, they were living up there, and saying it was so beautiful that they hoped to build later on, and they still own it. But they, you know, they're going to, because the attorney, and it's not the president attorney, the former, a former attorney, jumped up and said, and this is at a regular council meeting, says, we should, we should treat the acres differently, and because it looked like something was going to happen maybe on Paul Avenue, uh, he says, he asked the council that night to make a motion to legislate a rule that would say, no, you're going to treat this differently because it's in the acres. Have nothing to do with slope, has nothing to do with any uh safety concerns, just because it was zoned differently, and although, in all the previous years, any lot in the acres was treated as any lot in the city, there was no differentiation. It was only done at that time to try to get a workaround for eminent domain. It's like, that's what it is, it's a taking. You zone it with such excessive conditions on it, because now it's in the acres. Well, it was a lot like any other lot, lot in the city. So anyway, I'll try to put together a better argument about what's going on, but it's, it's no more sense now than it was back then. I mean, it's, that's, well, yeah, that's true, that, that, I think that's what I was trying to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment from Erin Becker.
Please, go ahead, Ms. Becker.
Um, I'm going to read it on her behalf, she is saying, "Like Mindy watching the movie, I'm confused by this law and very much appreciate having a month to study it further." And then she has one question that hasn't been addressed. "While the successful challenge to SB9 seemingly doesn't apply to Brisbane, if the law is struck down in the future, what would happen to our proposed ordinance? I would hope that we have an automatic termination. I also advocate that we protect the Brisbane Acres against development."
Thank you for that comment from Erin Becker. And do we have anyone else online who'd like to speak?
No further hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Does staff want to address that question?
Or is that something, does staff want to address that question, or would it be better to address it when we return on the eighteenth?
It'd be better to wait till the eighteenth. Generally, you can't enforce something. But we'd have to get into the specifics, so let's wait until the eighteenth, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. The question was answered for you, John. Okay, so with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to continue this hearing to July eighteenth, 2024. Can I get a first and a second?
I'll make, I'll second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And thank you for the the help with this, staff, I, I do appreciate that we're going to take a little more time to look at it and, and look at the implications. So that is going to move us to item R. And this is another, is to consider introduction of an ordinance approving a zoning text amendment, 2024 RZ dash two, citywide. And staff report, please, on this item, and this item, I also have the same intentions to move to the July eighteenth meeting. But I do want to give the opportunity for staff and for us to get the initial report. And also for the public to make any initial comments that they have because they've taken the time to come for this. So staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. This item is to introduce an omnibus ordinance which includes a number of proposed amendments to Title seventeen of the municipal code. The overall ordinance objectives are to address certain housing element goals and for consistency with Senate Bill SB four seven eight, which was signed into law in 2021. In May of last year, City Council adopted the Housing Element, which covers the planning period from 2023 to 2031. It includes the goals of facilitating and supporting the production of housing at all income levels and avoiding unreasonable government constraints to the provision of housing. Then there are several policies and programs that fall under these goals. One example is a program under goal two to increase the height limit in districts that allow for multifamily developments to thirty-six feet. So that they're more readily able to accommodate three-story developments. Also, in 2021, the governor signed into law SB four seven eight, as I mentioned, and that's aimed at increasing the infill housing and specifically the development potential within multifamily zoning districts by requiring jurisdictions to allow for certain floor area limits. In working to address these objectives, the need for a number of other cleanup items that are related became apparent. And we can go to the next slide. So a summary of the draft ordinance amendments are provided with this and the next slide. This one outlines the proposed amendments to development standards in the various districts where residential uses are permitted. Well, the next one outlines reorganization process updates and other clarifying updates. First, as I mentioned, the Housing Element Program called for thirty-six-foot height limits within the districts that allow for multifamily development. The Planning Commission's recommendation to council reflects a desire to have equity in the height limits across the districts. So the thirty-six-foot height limit is proposed to be extended to the single-family districts as well as the multifamily. Currently, the height limit ranges from twenty-eight to thirty feet in the R districts and then thirty-five feet in the multi, the mixed-use multifamily districts. And for the floor area ratios, those would be uniform for multifamily developments of three or more units, and that would be at a FAR, floor area ratio of one point two five. That is consistent with the provisions of SB four seven eight. The FARs for single-family dwellings and duplexes would remain at the current level of zero point seven two. The exceptions to district development regulations would be largely reorganized, but there are a few specific updates to the standards, and those were highlighted in the redline version that's included in the draft ordinance, and I won't get into that level of detail here unless there's questions. And then the next slide, two of two. Regarding reorganization of the permit, permit and processing for clarifications, the sections pertaining to exceptions to development regulations would be pulled out of the General Use Regulations Chapter and would become a standalone chapter. Request for reasonable accommodations for those with disabilities would go from a zoning administration administrator discretionary review to a ministerial review through the building permit process. And that's subject to certain findings. The procedures for permit requests to modify the exceptions on site, a site-specific basis would be normalized as a zoning administrator review. And that's with a notice to neighbors. Administration under Chapter seventeen fifty-six would be renamed to zoning administrator, and that's to better reflect its focus. And the zoning administrator procedures would also be updated and flushed out further. Appeals in Chapter seventeen fifty-two would also be updated for greater structure and consistency on the time periods and processes for appeals. And finally, there are a few other clarifying updates. These include proposed amendments to the Variances Chapter and the Design Permit Modifications Chapter and an overall update to the tables, to be table formats for, for the R1 districts and Exceptions Chapters. So in closing, the Planning Commission provided a recommendation to council to approve the omnibus ordinance following their May nineteenth public hearing. And so with that, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the staff report?
I don't have any.
Okay, Colleen.
Would it be possible for our Community Development Department staff to not only prepare materials for this next incarnation of the meeting with some visuals, but I think it would behoove us to have a little more saturation in our city media, both the star, the blast, and I think the language as concise as possible, just kind of an introduction of what we're going to be covering in that meeting. If, if perhaps the Community Development Department could send that on to our, our communications staff and blanket everything, that way we don't get get this playing out on Facebook with things being misconstrued a bit, and then any interested parties, they, they kind of know what it's about, they won't feel excluded. Thank you.
I think that's a really great idea, and, you know, I've been writing down some questions for staff that, you know, what I'm going to try to do is get them to staff before the meeting. So we can get a personal answer and, and know what kind of questions we're asking and what kind of questions we still have questions on. With that, I'm going to open it up for the public. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? I have no slips. I see no hands raised. Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to comment on this item?
I see no hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and just to be advised that when we do revisit this on July eighteenth, we will go ahead and accept public comments at that time also. So you will have an opportunity to speak on this and so that we can all make good, good choices on your behalf. With that, I would accept a first and a second to continue the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none? We will get back to our regular agenda, but we are going to take a really quick little break here for five minutes. So to stretch your legs and we'll be back in five minutes.
Madam Mayor, we're ready when you are.
Thank you very much. We're going to move back to our regular agenda and we're going to go to public hearing on item N, Consider Adoption of Resolutions to Approve the Budget for Fiscal Year 2425, and Adopt the Resolution Adopting the Annual Budget for Fiscal Year 2425, and Making Appropriations for the Amount Budgeted for the City and the Successor Agency and the Housing Authority. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. On May 30, 2024, staff presented an overview of the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 budget to the City Council. General Fund revenues and departmental budgets were presented for review. Again, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank City Manager Clay Holston, our department heads, budget managers, their supporting staff, Financial Services Manager Tran Nguyen, Accounting Analyst Lori Pierce, and Senior Analyst Rose Valia, who were instrumental in getting this document prepared, gathered, and forwarded to you. So the budget presented included a critical review of actual costs and department needs. The city's budget document contains revenues, appropriations, and other financial information pertaining to all city operating budgets, and the capital improvement plan is not included as it is not usually reviewed during the off-years of the biannual budget cycle and will therefore be revisited at a later period. The city's budget goal is to achieve a balanced budget with revenues, including reimbursements or transfers from other funds for services provided equal to or greater than expenditures. At times, the city can plan for revenues to be less than expenses using its available resources or fund balance. For fiscal year 2425, after presentation, oh, I apologize. For 2425, staff projects that revenues will decrease by approximately 251,000 from current year's expected results to a total of 28,640,000. Overall, expenses from the general fund are expected to total 31,339,000. Therefore, staff recommends the use of available resources as required to meet established programs and initiatives. A copy of the May 30, 2024 staff report was included in your packet for reference. The net use of fund balance for fiscal year 2425 is therefore anticipated to be 2,699,000, which is the difference between revenues and expenditures. At the May 30, 2024 meeting, council requested that departments bring back a list of proposed items identified that could either be placed on hold until 2025 or pushed to the fiscal year 2526 in order to further consider the proposed deficit as part of the budget review on June 6, 2023. Financial stability remains a high priority for the city of Brisbane. Staff looks forward to working with the council and the community to address the financial challenges that lay ahead. Staff will continue to seek ways as efficiently as possible to provide services to the community, and the city will continue to consider appropriate economic development and tax revenue generation projects that are viable for our city. And with that, we will entertain any questions that you may have.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. Please.
Certainly, go ahead, please, Colleen.
On the attachment detailing some items that could be set aside for now, one that caught my eye, and I'd like a response from our North County Fire Rep right there in the back. One of these items is $50,000, fire safety planning, and that concerned me with the current status of wildfire and insurance problems. Could you give me some assurance that delaying fire safety planning would not be a bad move?
So I'm sorry, we're playing rochambo and the city attorney's calling me at the same time. So, ma'am, that was actually an item that the Public Works Department put in there.
Oh, okay.
And I don't remember where it was generated from, but you may recall that that discussion was, and it's come up in years past, and it was thoughts about, are there ways to manage the various open spaces we own, perhaps as a way not only to add to fire safety, but to demonstrate to our citizens and our businesses how they might also do similar things on our property? And it's just an item that's been carried over multiple times, and it sort of came in a little bit late in our planning process, and the city manager asked us to put it in there, and we did. But from our perspective, it's been held off for a couple of years, so I don't think that there's an issue. And it doesn't necessarily fall under North County Fire Authority, but it would certainly be an integrated effort where they would be participating with us in the planning and with whatever council members, whether it's a full council or committees that want to work on it and think about what those plans might be at a later date.
Okay, so since I was one of the proponents to hold off on some things, I still have a concern about this being defrayed because one of the things that came up about insurance and insurers is that whole fire hardening and getting community groups together to assess different areas, both residential and public property, and is there a way, I don't know what the $50,000 entailed, whether that was just planning, consulting, meetings, tree and vegetation removal, is there a way to put some of that back in so that we make some progress without this full amount?
So, ma'am, of course, the Public Works Department would be happy to do as much or as little as you'd like us to do. I think that 50,000 is the reasonable budgetary number, considering that we haven't really scoped out a plan, so I'd be very hesitant to take that number and just randomly hack it in half and be able to tell you I could do something that would be effective and would accomplish our goals.
Okay, so it's kind of an open-ended plan. There's nothing concrete that has already been formulated.
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions from the council?
You know, I have a question, thank you. So, let's see, in that same, you know...
Page 77?
Yeah, that same attachment, it's going to be page 77. So, under community park bathroom renovations and the play structure repairs, and then there's also the playground surfacing. So, this is Candelay for 2025, so that's like, I guess we'll do a mid-year review. Hey, if things look good, then we'll move forward with doing those improvements.
That is correct. So, we're looking at January 2025, so it would still be within the same fiscal period, or fiscal year, rather?
Okay, great. Yeah, I know that there's been, you know, some folks in the community, you know, talking about that, and so, thank you. That's it.
Karen, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Madison. Okay. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the staff working hard to bring our budget a little closer to expectations. And I think that as we go forward in the year and we identify sources of income that may get realized and may, you know, and know more where we're at, then we can go back and look at some of these things, but I do appreciate the work that went into making these adjustments at this time. Do we want to open it up now for discussion from the public? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? I have no slips. Do we have any members of the public online that would like to speak?
There are no hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay. With that, are we willing to go ahead and move forward with this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the budget for fiscal year 2425.
Second.
Okay. Actually, I need to make a motion to close the public hearing first. So, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
And then we will go ahead and with no further discussion, I would accept a first and a second to adopt the resolution.
Make a motion to approve the budget for fiscal year 2425.
Second.
And all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to item two, to adopt the Guadalupe Valley Municipal Improvement District Resolution, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2425 and making appropriations for the amount budgeted. Staff report.
There are none, Madam Mayor. You can just make the motion.
Okay. And do we have any questions from the council?
I do not.
No. Then I will now open the public hearing. Would any member of the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have anyone online that would like to speak on this?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then can I get a first and second to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any council discussion? Can I get a first and a second to adopt a Guadalupe Valley Municipal Improvement District Resolution to adopt the budget?
I'll second.
And second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we are going to move on to item O, which is to consider adoption of a resolution adopting a master fee schedule. And this is, I believe, what we had on our desk when we arrived this evening. I know that we looked at it online, but I think that if there's any questions, we'll follow along with this for the staff report. So, staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In 2002, is it on? Okay. City Council reviewed and approved target recovery percentages for the city's fee schedule. During the presentation of the first reading of Ordinance 468, staff stated the city council would have the opportunity to review and approve fees annually. Staff, therefore, presents the master fee schedule each fiscal year. So, the attached resolution is the annual revision recommended by staff. The revision is allowed up to the inflation increase using the San Francisco Oakland Hayward California Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, also known as CPIU, for all items less energy for 12 months through the previous December. The city is embarking on a master fee study this year and is expecting to have the study available hopefully by the end of the year for your review. In the meantime, we are recommending that you review this proposed master fee schedule so that we could implement at least the CPI increases within 60 days, which would be in August. In the previous year, the city increased rates generally by 4% and adjusted some rates after a thorough review to keep our fees in line with costs of providing the service. This year's analysis and revision would allow up to an increase of 2.5%, which was the CPIU through December 2023. Staff recommends we raise the fully allowed rate of 2.5%, similar to last year, to keep up with the increase in costs. Fee increases go into effect 60 days after approval. Again, that would be August 7, 2024. Before you, what we had attached to the packet online, there was one small omission, so which is why you have a packet in front of you, and we can highlight that. But we just wanted to mention that after seeking input from each department as they review their fees, there were a few exceptions of the 2.5% increase. Some of them were identified in Parks and Rec, Finance, Planning, and Public Works, Parks and Recreation. The exceptions included a thorough review performed by the Parks and Recreation Commission where they examined their rates from various surrounding agencies to compare market rates for the various park and recreation fees. As a result, there were several fees that were considered to be a proposal for an increase beyond the 2.5%. Some areas were 6% for facility rentals, and then there were a few other increases that were 10% for residents and 25% for non-residents. And then there are also some other areas where the rates were adjusted to specific rates, again, to in line with other local agencies. In finance, the rates related to utility billing penalties were kept flat since the water and sewer rates were recently increased. Staff recommends revisiting during the master fee study. In planning, there are several rates that are tied to hourly wages that the increase was beyond the 2.5%, so we had to adjust those accordingly. Also, as the Community Development Department is in the middle of their implementation of the land permitting software system, they took a thorough review of their fees and adjusted to correlate the cost recovery to, related to processes, and adjusted the fees that no longer require public hearings to reduce the staff costs that was assigned to those rates in the past. And finally, Public Works also has several rates that are tied to hourly wages, so those also had to be adjusted to exceed the 2.5%. So with that, we have before you the list of the various rates that we're proposing for changes. You would see redlined areas in several that were either moved to other sections to the department, consolidated. If it was a new rate that the Commission for Parks and Recreation was recommending, those were also added. So with that, I will take any questions and approach you'd like to review.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Carolina, in the staff report, you mentioned that the master fee schedules reviewed each fiscal year. The CPI was examined through December of 2023. Extracting energy-related costs, we ended up at 2.5%. Nobody likes to see fees escalating, but I have a genuine concern right now, and it is that when we're operating on a CPI from December, when January through June 1st, we're seeing things still going up, and by the time we get to the next fiscal year, are we going to be raising things that much more because we didn't raise it enough as a catch-up? And... And it seems to be affecting everything in our budget, from supplies, fuel costs. It, it's just, everything you touch now has been going up. And you mentioned in here that, um, I'm trying to find the wording here. Well, let me just ask you this way. Is there any reason why we couldn't actually just say, instead of two point five, let's go three, or three point five? Second part of the question is, if we get to mid-year, if we don't, if we just go with two point five, and we get to mid-year and things have escalated appreciably, where then next year it could be just outrageous, can we in turn raise it then? Third part of the question is, the master fee consultant, the study, when is that anticipated to be completed? And could in fact, the results of that promulgate a fee change? But when exactly do we think that's going to happen? And, and I know this is a sticker shock to everybody, but it'd be even worse if next year we're really in the hole and we'd have to raise it way higher. So I, I'd almost like to see a little hedge.
Why not raise more, I think was your first question? Okay, so, um, the, the policy and the ordinance that was implemented allows us up to, um,
Okay, so it's in ordinance?
Part of it. With, with a review to make sure that you're not, um, exceeding the cost of providing the service. And then I'm going to actually answer your third question first, because it's going to answer the second one. The master fee study, um, is, is scheduled to be completed by the end of the year so that we could implement within this fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
So that, that, the, the original intent, when we had discussions with, uh, consultants, was to hold off on implementing any changes at this time. But we decided that we could at least move forward with what we have with the CPI, because we felt that there were significant increases in the costs as we were reviewing the budget and doing the thorough review of what, um, we were seeing for some areas. And then there were, uh, again, the, taking the opportunity while the two departments, Park and Recreation and, um, the, uh, develop, um, I'm sorry, Community Development, looking at their areas because of things that they were doing, that we could at least implement those changes and propose those changes now for your review. And then, uh, we're, if, if we were to have it either by December, January, then you would have sixty days from there to increase, to have those fees go into effect.
Okay, and, and I mean, it, it, it's the segue between, the fees don't cover all of our costs as it is. And then we get in the situation where we're defraying maintenance. I mean, in this budget, Parks and Rec, thank you, you're talking about, and, and it might be under also with Public Works, um, the high-pressure cleaning at the pool. And we want to have nice facilities. We don't want to see them degrade because we're not able to cover those costs. So it, it's really important. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I have, uh, Park and Rec questions. So, page five of fifteen. If you go down to like the lawn area rental fees, so it says per day, but previously was per hour with a three-hour minimum. So is that like, if you just look at like the first lawn area price, forty-seven dollars, is that for three hours?
No, that's per day. And they have to rent a lawn area in conjunction with a picnic area.
So when was it previously per hour with the three, like?
That was a couple of years ago. We modified that.
Okay, I just didn't know if that was like for this year.
No.
Okay, got it. And then, um, next page, going to youth activities. The way that Club Rec Monthly is listed just seems like kind of confusing because it's listed as monthly, but then it's per person per ten months?
Correct.
So if you're billing it, are you billing it monthly?
Yes.
You're not billing it in one lump sum? So I'm just curious why it wouldn't be like a hundred and ninety-six, ten per person per month?
We, we could list it that way.
The thing is confusing because it says Club Rec Monthly.
Typically, when people register, they're registering for the school year. Um, it's not often that we have people that drop off, so the commitment is anticipated for the full school year, but they're paying monthly. But we could, we could reflect that.
If something happened, they moved or whatever, they wouldn't be committed for the rest of the?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and then going down to preschool is a similar question. So are you billing per hour or are you billing like for a session?
Um, they register per session. The reason that we have a per hour rate is because there is fluctuation within each session. Um, if there's like holidays or days where we have staff in service, it's not always the same number of hours per session. So it's easier for us to calculate, um, based on per hour.
Got it. Thank you. I like the per minute late pick-up fee. Nice. That's good. And then this is just like a picky thing, but for the transaction fee, do you want per class comma session? Or is it class session? Because like some are classes, some are sessions.
Yeah.
Some are sports.
I think a comma would make sense there.
Okay, and then next page, page seven, I think you can take Lunafest out of there entirely. Because that's just.
Doesn't exist.
Not happening. Boo.
Shed a tear.
If it, if it does in the future, we can always put it back, but I just think, you know, to clean it up.
Yeah.
We shouldn't have anything on there that's really like not a thing anymore. But that's it for me, so just a question, just a few questions.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm going to stick with, uh, Park and Rec as well. So, uh, and I want to kind of follow up on, uh, one of the questions that you had, Madison. So the, that gazebo area, fees, uh, page five of fifteen, so eighty-eight? Don't have to read my, uh, read with my glasses. So, um, so, you know, I guess it was maybe last week or a weekend before, there was a, a pretty large party at the gazebo, and it spilled over outside, uh, the gazebo. So are they, if you rent the gazebo, are you also tied to that, you know, how many people rate as well?
No, but, um, as I mentioned with the picnic area, so you, you have to rent a lawn area in conjunction with the gazebo. So if someone?
You do have to rent, okay, yeah, that's, that was my question.
Yes.
So you, the gazebo counts just like a picnic spot?
Yes.
Okay, cool. And then, um, let's see, so, you know, the, the, you know, we've talked about the Mission Blue Center and the rates and, when's the last time that we compared our rates to other, uh, similar facilities that have events?
So the Park and Rec Commission did that as part of their recommendation process this year, this spring.
All right, and, and so that reflects, uh, these rates here. And, and so, you know, some of the things we talked about, like upgrading the kitchen. So if we, you know, made some improvements to Mission Blue, do you think then we could increase our rates and go up to another tier?
Possibly. I, I mean, unfortunately, we're competing with other agencies in our neighboring agencies, that have new facilities like, um, South San Francisco, Burlingame, Millbrae, they all have brand-new buildings. So, um, we don't want to price ourselves out of the market, but
That makes sense.
You know, it's, it's hard for me to speculate and say that, yes, if we renovated the kitchen, we would in return have more rentals. Uh, that would be the hope, but I, I couldn't say for certain.
Got it, got it, okay. But, um, the condition of, of Mission Blue hasn't deterred, uh, folks from wanting it, so, okay, good.
I think it's fair to say, sorry, Cliff, but I think it's fair to say that you may get in different types of inquiries. Like you may get more wedding inquiries if the kitchen was different, or events that needed catering.
Catering.
So you may not, I mean, it's hard to speculate if you'd get more, but it's likely that it would, it could be a different demographic of interested renters that might be, you might appeal to.
Perhaps, yeah. And then, uh, the Mission Blue ball field. So, uh, s- s- the School of the Arts still rent, uh?
Yeah, Academy of Art.
Academy of Art, sorry.
They utilize our field as their home field, yes.
Okay, and, um, yeah, I'm just kind of curious, like, uh, when's the last time that we sat down with them to negotiate their, uh, contract with us?
Well, they, they pay the fees that are listed in the master fee schedule, so they're in alignment with that. Um, we, our sports coordinators do meet with them annually preseason to kind of work through logistics and details, but they pay fees in alignment with what we have listed in the master fee schedule.
Okay, because I mean, they're, I mean, our field is their, like, home field. You know, just want to make sure that, uh, that private school is paying their fair share.
Yes.
All right, uh, that is it. Thank you very much.
So we have talked about the resident versus non-resident fees a lot of late. And we know that there are people who are non-residents who get their buddies to rent the facilities for them. So I'm still stuck on the idea that we have one flat fee. Can we look at that? Well, that's what we've been talking about, is that the, um, people who don't live in Brisbane are calling their friends in Brisbane and renting the facilities at the residential rate.
I get that. I just feel like it punishes like residents because of a few bad actors. Like all the residents are going to pay more because there may be, like, it's hard to know what the scope of that problem is. You know, to say like, sure, it's occurring, right? You try to finagle a little discount if you can, I get it. But I, I like, how, how bit, how widespread is that occurring? You know, I don't know that it justifies like all of our residents having to pay more. So I think that's what would happen, right? We would all pay more.
I just want to look at it.
So, so I have a question. I'm, it's, I'm sticking on Park and Rec.
Okay.
You're it.
The lawn area.
Yes.
When we have a lawn area residence over a hundred people, so you have a hundred and fifty people on the lawn, doesn't that just ruin the lawn? And one event that we get two hundred and fifty-seven dollars for a whole day trashes the lawn. How long does it take to recover? What are the costs of having a two? I mean, after a day in the park, I'm sure our lawn can be pretty trashed, especially wherever there's a concession, where there's extra moisture, where they've set up jumpy houses. And, and I'm not seeing any, and, and maybe I just missed it, there's no jumpy house fee. And that should be a fee. Most cities don't even allow them for, um, insurance purposes. And I think we're one of the few cities that do allow jumpy houses.
And we get them all the time.
Well, yeah. And, and they trash the lawn under the jumpy house. So we need to have something that is going to, um, at least offset some of the trash that happens, the, the, the wear and tear on these things. And, and for me, the park use and the lawn being torn up from just general use and having a hundred and fifty people, um, does not in any way compensate the city for the abuse that our parks get from having large events. And, and that's something that I know tonight is not, not the night really to get into those details, but I think that some of that needs to be looked at. And I see Randy is really wanting to chime in on this. He really wants to chime in. I can just see him.
Well, if I may just provide a point of clarification, so we do have a provision in our facility rental policies that requires any, um, application that we receive for a reservation in our park with more than one hundred people, that has to come before council. That permit application comes before you, before anything's approved by our department. It is very rare that we have any, um, applications received for groups of more than a hundred people, but there is that provision there so that you would have the opportunity to review those applications if they come through. I don't know if Randy wants to weigh in on the recovery of the, the park for, after large events, but, um,
I think the only point I will make is that athletic fields and fields for gathering that have ornamental turf have a yin and a yang. We want to keep them beautifully green so people will enjoy them, but when people enjoy them, they take away the beautiful green. So we just try and find that balance in between. We try and keep it as best we can so that they can be used for their intended purpose.
Okay, the other thing that
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize you had another one.
I'm sorry.
Another question, sorry.
I, I do have another question. The other thing that, um, is partially in the Park and Rec Master Fee Schedule and might really go back to the budget, is that I think we have an imbalance in our Park and Rec and some of the fee schedules where we are really heavy on one group of consumers versus another. And I know that in, when we, when we first discussed the master fee schedule, we had quite a bit of, um, correspondence that came from the seniors who use the aerobics program. And they were very concerned about prices going up for them. They were very
Water aerobics?
Water aerobics. They were a very vocal group. They, um, did a lot of very nice lobbying, um, on the behalf of that group. And, and looking at our Park and Rec budget and the fee schedule, I don't see that we necessarily have senior discounts built into all of the programs. And also I see that there's a very, a, a, a lot of disparagey between what we're doing for young children, teen youths, almost nothing that's labeled adult. And very little for seniors. So I know we're very weighted for younger people in our Park and Rec and our fee schedule, to really give a benefit to the, the families that need it. But I think that as we come back with the master fee schedule and we come back looking at what we're charging, that, that maybe we can get a little less disparagey between, between these groups where we're serving our seniors and our young people in a similar type fashion and giving everyone the consideration that they need, you know, to be happy and healthy in our Park and Rec system. So that's just a, a personal comment. And it probably, you know, would be something that you'd look at in a, in a program going forward or how you look at the master fee schedule going forward. But I know that some of their concerns were with the, um, how the finance on the class packs were, where you were having to pay a transaction fee more often than you really should. And so it was increasing the class, per class to something that was maybe going to be outside their budget. So I don't know if in this you've looked at that at all
Yeah, yeah.
and figured out how, a way to work with that that might be a little bit for that particular group of seniors.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
So, yes, we've worked with Heidi, who's the instructor. As an independent contractor with the city, she sets all of her own fees. The conversation that came up was with regards to transaction fees. And so we looked at, um, we really don't charge transaction fees for any of our senior programs. A lot of the senior programs that we offer through the Sunrise Room are free, um, to people above fifty-five. And so we felt in order to remain consistent with that, that we weren't going to impose the transaction fee on the water aerobics program since it was predominantly geared towards seniors. So those fees have remained the same. Um, if Heidi chooses to increase those, as an independent contractor, we don't really have any, any say in that. But, um, I think she, it, it's her intent to keep the fees reasonable for participants so that they can continue. so that they can continue to partake in the class.
Good. That's good to know that, uh, their advocacy and their knowledge of how to be an advocate has paid off for that group.
I have a que, I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
So with respect to filling, to, with respect to ratio of services for different age groups, is your perspective that one of the reasons why we may be more skewed towards programming for youth is because that programming gets filled?
Yes. I mean, there is significant demand, and for a lot of those youth-based programs, we're the only provider in town.
I know that, for example, the Roomba class, adult Roomba class, had, like, th- three people register? Or four people register? And I think that that's something that, and correct me if I'm wrong, is an experience across adult, adult programming. Um, I don't know about seniors, but surely in adult programming where there's classes that are offered and there's not enough people who sign up for the class to justify the class continuing. So I think, you know, some of the distribution of classes based on demographics is demand-based and just because of the response of the community, not necessarily because we value one group more than the other.
Right. That's correct.
Okay. And then for the resident versus non-resident question, do you know of any other cities that just charge flat rates across the board? Or are most cities structured for resident versus non-resident pricing?
Most cities have a discounted rate for residents versus non-residents.
And specifically for, say, something like a mission, like a event rental or a park rental where that might be a case where you try to get your buddy to rent it for you? Those also too are generally resident versus non-resident and on other neighbor ci, neighboring cities, right?
That's correct.
Got it. Okay. Um, good to know. Do you have any idea, like, how pervasive that problem might be? I mean, sometimes people outright say, like, I'm gonna book this for my friend, but...
It, it's not often that they're forthcoming with that information.
I guess they're forthcoming to me.
But we do try, I mean, we do take the opportunity to really educate the renter when they come into the office to, to process a reservation in that as the renter, they're assuming the liability for that group, right? The expectation is that they're the ones that are providing the payment. They're the ones who are securing the insurance certificate. They need to, they are required to be on site throughout the duration of the event. I think sometimes that gives people pause in making that commitment for a friend or a, a, an acquaintance. But we, we take it as an educational opportunity to, to try to cut back on, you know, how pervasive that becomes with non-resi, with residents renting for non-residents.
So do you have a policy where, like, the person who's on the application, you look at their ID, right, you confirm that's a Brisbane address, but then also the form of payment, if it's a check, if it's a card, that it matches?
Yes.
All of those things line up?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? So I'll open it up for public comments. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? And do we have anyone online?
I see no hands raised, Madam Mayor. We have one in, in the audience.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Lisa Greenlee, and I'm with the Park and Rec Commission. I just wanted to thank you guys for your support, um, in helping us to make Park and Rec as, as vital and as, as exciting as it can be. We work really hard to try and bring our rates up to what we know our surrounding areas are. Also keeping in mind that we have humble beginnings here in Brisbane, and we don't wanna price people out of what they're expected, I mean, what their home, what their home provides, what their city provides for their seniors and their kids. It, it's what makes Brisbane fun, and I just wanted to thank you for your, your support.
Thank you, Lisa, for your support and, and commitment to the Park and Rec Commission.
And we'll fund it as long as we can. Okay. Um, no members of the public online, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion?
Yep. Madam Mayor, I need a second for the closing.
I'm sorry. What's that?
Second.
Need a second.
Second, okay.
And all in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye.
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 Okay. Um, no discussion, so can I get a motion to approve the master fee schedule?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, we get to skip in our, our thing now, since we already did it.
Well, P, right.
We are going to... Get to the right page. Yes. P. Okay, this is to consider adoption of resolution imposing a national pollutant discharge elimination system, NP, NPDES compliance fee on commercial property owners within an identified study area. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, good evening. So that rather length, lengthy, uh, subject discussion accurately describes what we're attempting to do this evening and what we're recommending. For those who are interested in what the study area is and where those commercial businesses are, I refer you to the last page of the study report. The mapping is in there. To understand how we got to where we are now, we have to go back to nineteen seventy-two when the federal government passed the Clean Water Act with the intent of prohibiting and regulating the discharge of pollutions to the receiving waters of the United States. Subsequent to that, the California Porter-Caloon Water Quality Act was created, and that act assumed the responsibility to enforce the Clean Water Act in the state of California by the State Water Resources Control Board. And the State Water Resources Control Board then passed that authority down to their nine regional boards. And here in the nine-county Bay area, we are regulated by the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board. And as a result of our discharges, which primarily go to the bay, that's, that's what the big focus is on. And of course, what we are looking at is preventing discharges. And what happens here is that when water is not allowed to naturally permeate into the soil and be naturally filtered, it goes into the bay untreated, and it brings along pollutants with it. And that's, that's the nature of the thing. The paradigm behind the recommended action this evening is that the commercial areas, with their significant amount of flat roof space, with their significant amount of paved area, are disproportionately large dischargers to the bay. The only other party in the city that has similarly large paved areas that don't allow, allow water permeate and don't have adjoining area where the water can be treated is the city itself. And that's the function of us owning buildings. That's the function of us owning roadways, and that's the function of us owning sidewalks. So if you look at the sta, staff report, there's a rather lengthy discussion with a lot of numbers about how we came up with those square footages and, and how we got to where we are on that. So, uh, having said that, I wanna note that this is a majority protest action under Proposition Two Eighteen. And what that means is for the item to fail, there have to be a majority of written protests filed by the affected parcels owners. So at present time, there are two hundred and fifty-three parcels that are, would potentially be affected by this. Uh, I have in hand at this moment fifteen written protests. So for the item to fail, there would have to be, uh, one hundred and twenty-seven majority protests, so we're, we're a bit off of that right now. Before I move along, uh, and let you ask questions and open the public hearing at your pleasure, I'd ask the clerk to bring up the PowerPoint deck, because there were really only two questions that primarily, uh, were presented to me. Thank you. Yeah, if we can make that full size, please. Thank you. Could we go back to the first slide, please? That's deeper in. Can we move that, the photo on the bottom too, so we could see it, the lower left? So, uh, the first question that people asked me, for those who called in, was, well, how did you calculate this? So what you have before you is the product of an ortho-digital photo. And what ortho-digital means, it's a fancy word for saying that an airplane flew over San Mateo County with both cameras and survey equipment that were linked together, and then provided data to us that allows us to measure properties down to within the inch. Okay, so, so what you see has happened here, what our GIS, our Geographic Information System Department was able to do is you've got a dotted line there that shows you the outside, the, the parcel boundaries. And then you've got a set of colors. It's, I'm sure it's dark color to you. I'm just, with me being colorblind, I'm not quite exactly sure what color to describe that. That describes the building footprint, and then we were able to calculate the square area on that. And then we were also able to calculate the square area of the pavement that they have. And you'll see in there that we also excluded every area that was permeable. So that's the grass, that's a building that you recognize. It's kind of across the street from us, uh, on the entry here to Valley Drive. So that's how we were able to calculate it. We're quite confident that the numbers we've come up with are, are accurate. Now, the other question that came up is, slightly unique situation in this community is that we have two business areas that are, uh, that are managed by property managers. They're associations. So they have, you know, fifty to a hundred different parcels on them. And so we had to go through and divvy those up because they own their individual parcels, and they also own a share of the parking lot. So if we could go to the next slide, please? So, and if we could move those things out of the way again, please. Thank you so much. So, so here's what we did, and, and bear with me as I go through the math. So the top-left column in yellow, you see it says building footprint totals. So that's the total of the buildings, and this particular address that we're looking at here is, this is the one hundred North Hill one. So we know what the total of building footprints is, and then we know the total additionally of what the parking lot is. So in order for us to go through this, and I've given you an example here, this happens to be, uh, Building Fifty-Two, 'cause that was the individual who spoke to us last. What we did is we take their building area, which you see is twenty-six forty-six, and we divide it by the gross building area, and that gives us a percentage. And please don't break out your calculator and try to recreate this, because this was actually done in Excel. So the number isn't two-point-eight. That's what it rounds up to be, but embedded in the cell, it's like two-point-seven-seven-oh-four. And that'll be important later. You'll, you'll see why that becomes important later. And then you then take that percentage and you multiply it by the gross impermeable area, right? And that gives you the share that that business has, right? 'Cause there, there are two-point-eight percent of the total buildings, so their share of the total extra impermeable area is two-point-eight percent. You add those two together. That's what's attributable to Building Fifty-Two. And in this particular case, it came out to be fifty-eight forty-three. The calculations that I mentioned earlier in the staff report, they go back and they tie to what our backfill from our general fund money is, the NIPPI's program came out to be two cents. So in this particular case, this one property would get a hundred and sixteen-dollar-and-eighty-six cents bill on its property tax bill once, once a year. One-time charge, and they paid off in the two fees, like everybody else does with your property tax. And so if we go to the last slide, please, the, the last thing I wanna do, and this is important 'cause I just wanna show you that we did do a QAQC check on this. I'm sorry, Ingrid, I've, a, all my titles just keep moving around. They're in your way no matter what we do here, right? So that, the top of that says, how do we know the numbers are correct? And the way we know the numbers are correct is, what I've done here, what you're seeing in the top, the yellow numbers haven't changed, but what you're seeing in the, the lower, uh, rows and columns are the bottom of the spreadsheet. So you'll see the top-left column says ninety-five-three-eighty-three is the building footprint. And then at the bottom, when we summed all of the units that are in one hundred North Hill, it also came up to ninety-five-three-eighty-three. So that's a good check. And then when you look at the percent of gross building area, so that was when we did the calculation and came up with fifty-two. Fifty-two is having two-point-eight percent. We then checked that, and that added to a hundred percent, which is important. You know, that means nobody got overcharged, nobody got undercharged. And then you go to the, the third, uh, column that we have there. One hundred and fifteen-two-forty-seven is the same number that we have in the second yellow column up top, and that gives us the total numbers. So that's just important to know that there was a QAQC check. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions, or if you wanna open the public hearing first, and then I can answer questions after that, whatever is of council pleasure.
Question? Had a lot of calls about this today, so...
Today, yes.
Today. Um, so I really wanna thank you for putting this together. I think it makes it so much easier to understand. One comment that I heard today is, why are we not taking, why is the city not taking into consideration, like, single-family homes, apartments, where they may have paved areas, driveways, that sort of thing? Why, um, what's the city's rationale specifically just to focus on commercial property? Um, and, you know, other property that the city owns, like, streets and our, you know, our property?
Well, we are accounting for the streets. We are accounting for the ladder.
But like, you're not accounting for private, a private driveway or something like that.
Right. And, and the reason for that, as I mentioned earlier, is that disproportionately large amount of the commercial areas don't have any permeable area associated with them, or, or so little that I can call it next to zero, whereas the single-family homes do have an opportunity to do that. Furthermore, what we've been able to do is we've been able to leisure, uh, leverage, pardon me, transportation funds so that if you look through some of these streets that we've accounted for as being impermeable, we actually have six different green infrastructure treatment basins throughout the community that are picking up a significant amount of this, but we haven't debited that from it. I, I think in addition to that, I would also look at that and say, you as a council understand how environmentally friendly this community is and how focused we are on sustainability. And, and we have gone through an incredible amount of efforts here. We have one of the first climate action programs in the county. We are one of the first agencies to have sustainability staff, and it's now a sustainability program run by Adrian Atherton. We were early adopters of the bans on plastic bags, on, uh, single-use foodware, so forth. We were the first city in the state to receive an Excellence and Sustainability Award from the Institute for Legislative Government, and all of that was done without any assistance or funds coming from the commercial areas. So I, I think I would suggest that because of the amount of untreated water that they discharge to the bay and, and the, really, the much larger efforts that we have to make, it is true. Do we have a couple of, of catch basins in South We have to clean in town? Absolutely. It's much larger out in the commercial districts. It's an incredibly heavy, heavier load out in the commercial bit, district just because of the nature of what happens out there, and so that's the primary reason.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's my only question.
Don't, don't we have a small, uh, fee that is on personal property taxes?
We do. Yes, ma'am.
That, so s- single-family homes are paying?
Something, yes.
Uh, something.
That's correct.
They, they pay a dollar amount that may, is certainly less significant than, than what is happening here, but we do pay into that on our property taxes also.
We actually do both. So the, there is a fee that is charged to those single-family homes, and there is an amount, this is, goes back many years, and it talks about, uh, you know, how we fund our, how we fund the little bit of NIPPI's money that we get. There was an additional fee of it that was charged that the council also pays out of its general fund, but...
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from council?
Oh, I think it would be important for the public, um, for you to outline what the city has been paying out of our general fund, um, what the city is going to continue to pay out of our responsibility for our areas, and what, how the rationale of this price was calculated in order to cover that remainder amount.
Sure. So I'll, I'll just go back to the staff report then, ma'am, if you don't mind. I'll, I'll read through it. So our overall cost in this fiscal year to meet all the provisions of NIPPI's and fill that department was almost six hundred thousand dollars. I'll round up if you don't mind. It's five-eighty-two, but, so it was six hundred thousand dollars. There are other sources we get. We do get money. We do get a franchise fee from our solid waste haulers that we use in there. There's some money that comes in occasionally from Measure N, M, as in Mike, but the city's general fund backfilled that program with, by four hundred thousand dollars. And as we look at this, when, when we, the dollar amount that we would have here, so we're looking at the private buildings putting in, if it's thirteen, they call it fourteen thousand, it's close to two-hundred-eighty-thousand dollars, and we would still be continuing to put in the hundred-and-twenty thousand, plus all of the other sources that we leverage because we go out and go after them. For instance, you, you know, the biggest one I think of is when we increased the franchise fee for trash haulers. That was money that we leveraged that we didn't ask, you know, a, a business to pay directly, although it's fair enough to note that they paid indirectly, right, 'cause they paid on their trash fees.
Thanks.
Thank you. Does that answer all the questions for, from council? Okay. We'll go ahead and, um, open up the public hearing. I do have two slips, and we'll start with Nick from Prologis. And I'm sorry, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name.
It's a tough last name. I don't blame you.
I, I think it's the writing.
Really?
Yes.
Did I do bad?
Let me see.
Well, I don't know if this is up high enough.
It looks like a signature.
Oh, my bad.
And it's a lovely signature.
Thank you. Uh, well, my name is Nick Fafoudas. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Prologis. Uh, we are located in San Francisco, close by to Brisbane. So we're an industrial real estate company. Uh, we own approximately... We own approximately 800,000 square feet here in Brisbane on 15 parcels. So I am not here tonight to oppose a new fee, but instead oppose the methodology used to calculate the fee. So as indicated by the resolution, the new fee will only be charged to commercial property owners in a set area, yet the fee will fund the costs associated with the entire city's compliance. This means that the proposed fee will benefit all owners and residents in the city, but the burden will only be imposed on commercial property owners in a set area. So in other cities across the Bay Area, such as South San Francisco, Palo Alto, and San Leandro, many others, the fee is imposed on a pro-rata share across all buildings and residents, because they're all getting the same benefit. For example, in San Leandro, there's a fee that's set towards residents, and then a higher fee set towards commercial property owners, such as, you know, retail, mixed-use, industrial, commercial, all those uses. So we are requesting that City Council postpones the decision on this resolution, so the methodology for imposing this fee can be adjusted to be more fairly allocated towards all parcels in the city, and can closely mimic the fees in nearby cities across the Bay Area. Overall, we are supportive of cleaning up the stormwater system in the bay, but we want to work with the city to revise this methodology and make it more fair to all parties in the city of Brisbane. Thank you.
Thank you. As, as was outlined in the staff report, we do charge to residential, and we do absorb a lot of the cost out of our general fund for the city's streets and, and therefore that. And then I have Julia Johnson.
Hello, I represent the Calsters Fund, which has 11 buildings on Valley Drive, and I second Nick. I mean, with the, the way that the fee schedule is, I feel that other commercial properties should be paying as well. For instance, restaurants, you know, commercial buildings with restaurants, they are also a larger polluter, I guess you can say. I know from my experience as managing commercial property throughout the Bay Area, that, you know, yes, I realize industrial, it can be a big polluter, but other commercial properties, other businesses can also be a polluter as well, to the storm drains. I'm not opposed, I, I'm glad we're keeping the storm drains clean, and, you know, looking after those. I'm a big advocate to, you know, educate my tenants and let them know that, hey, you know, you can't put anything down the storm drain, because in industrial, as you know, some of these tenants, they, they accidentally put things down, and you gotta really come down hard on them, and call an environmental team to come out and clean it. I think as a business trying to operate, or as a public entity, actually, with Calsters, trying to conduct business in Brisbane has been a little bit difficult, because our leasing broker, as a leasing standpoint, this doesn't make it as attractive to our tenants, our potential tenants, and, you know, to impose all those fees on us and not spread it out a little bit more to other businesses, I guess that's our concern with, with Prologis, is we would like to see that it, the pro-rata share be spread out more, and not have all the burden.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Please, come up.
My name's John Lee. I own three units on North Hill Drive, on 100 North Hill Drive. We use, like, one unit of water per building section, and we, our sewer tax, where, is this is totally separate entity than what we already paying for sewer? Because we already pay sewer, and we use one unit. I mean, we use 800 gallons, and we get paid $75 a month for it, and we don't even use that. And then, the other thing was, like, we're at the bottom of Guadalupe, right? Where does all the water go from Guadalupe? Do we, does the water get treated, or you just penalized us for water that comes off the building that, I don't understand why, where the...
Perhaps, perhaps our city engineer can...
Well, sure, I'm not sure if the gentleman's conflating the situation we have here in Brisbane with what happens in San Francisco. Our sewer goes straight to the treatment plant? So the issue here is strictly for stormwater, and it's for untreated stormwater hitting the roofs and hitting the parking locks, and from, from Guadalupe, it goes down Bayshore, it goes into the central drainage channel, then goes directly to San Francisco Bay.
It goes to San Francisco Bay, so you don't treat the water coming off the, does the, does the county or anybody pay for the water coming off the hill? It's all stormwater, right? It's going down the road?
Do you want me to go back and forth here, ma'am, Madam Mayor?
I just have a question.
I, I, I think that if, if the gentleman has more questions, and then you can answer them when we finish.
I'll let him direct his comments to you, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, that's all right, that's all I had, I just was curious why, you know, you're, and with all the water that comes off of the city, and like these other people were saying, if all the water comes off the city and it comes off of our buildings, it doesn't get treated anyway, it goes to the bay. I don't understand what the taxes, you know, why there's additional payment for us. I just don't understand why it's necessary.
We'll try to get the city engineer to clarify that.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Is there any other member of the public? Please, Paul.
Paul Bluescalver is a Brisbane resident. This doesn't have anything to do with fees, but it does have something to do with the fluids coming off of the commercial areas, if I could bring it up. So I've had a concern, and I've reported it, and the concern is that 100 Cypress Lane, that entire parking lot, for the most part, drains to the channel that is a viable habitat. And what's, has occurred out there at that parking lot is, it's my understanding that when that building was leased, there's four parking spaces that are inward from the parking area, that were to be set aside for trail users for the Crocker Trail. And what's been there for quite some time now is a, a box truck, and numerous vehicles that are, some of them out of state license plates, but none of them registered. I know they're on private property, but the reason why I'm bringing it up is because it's my understanding that that's supposed to be set aside for trail users parking with signage, and if it was just cars parking there, I probably wouldn't be here today, but what's happening is, it's, they're working on the cars. There's every kind of fluid you could think of on the ground, as well as transmissions and other motor parts underneath the box truck. So it's gonna be a real mess next winter, with what's been going on there the last couple of months, with all the vehicle repairs being done. So I know it's on private property, but I thought that the city might have some obligation to maintain those four spots, or at least make sure that no automotive repair is being done there. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I'm sure the city engineer, Public Works, will look into that and get the clarification on what, what parking designation for the trail was ever made or implied.
So then I'll have to refer to the Community Development Director, ma'am, but it actually does kind of go back, and it speaks to the other gentleman's question about what do these fees do, right? Well, one of the things this fees does is we have a requirement, and, and I'm sorry, it's just acronym-intense, but it's called C4, because it happens to be the paragraph in the municipal regional permit we have. So we're required to go out, do commercial, industrial, and institutional inspections. And this is one of those things, like, well, Paul just reported, this is, this just triggered me, I will send our regulatory compliance officer out there, and he will do a C4 inspection on, on this property, and that's, and we'll do the follow-up on it, we'll make sure that it's being cleaned, and the issue is remedied. So it's not just a matter of treating water, it's a matter of doing all of these, I think we're now up to, like, 20 different conditions that we have to comply with, that increasingly require manpower, increasingly require capital expenses to do it, and really where we end up triggered with this so much is in the commercial areas. They are our big draws.
Can I help you, Randy, also?
Sure.
So I think in the staff report too, it outlines it also, and it says, in order to comply with the conditions of the permit, the city necessarily incur significant costs, including the cost A, to inspect properties to ensure that the owners are demonstrating compliance with capturing trash, B, to inspect for illegal stormwater discharges and connections, C, to monitor and protect receiving stormwater runoff, the lagoon and the bay, D, for street sweeping, E, to inspect and clean catch basins, and F, to pay additional fees imposed by the city-county, city slash county association of governments of San Mateo County to comply with water board, water control board requirements. So it kind of outlines a little bit more in detail of all the different things that the city has to do to comply. I, oh, and then I think that it's also important to note that this map basically captures all of the businesses in Brisbane with one exception, which are the very, very minimal businesses on San Bruno Avenue, and also the very minimal businesses on Visitation Avenue. I can think of maybe one or two that might even have a parking lot, but the majority of those businesses, the impervious areas are the city sidewalks, and the city, you know, parking spaces, that the city is already covering those costs for, out of what's coming out of, you know, our share of all the city streets and city sidewalks that we've calculated. So there's really not, when you look at that square footage, it's like microscopic in comparison to the scope of the square footage that exists on Bayshore, on industrial, in the Baylands, on, in Crocker. So, you know, if the city were to go out and say, include all of those little parcels, the needle, I have serious doubts would move anymore beyond $0.2 still. It's really that small. So I think that's important to note.
And if I might add, on a, if that council member, if you don't mind, is that on Visitation Avenue, every business above Mariposa, all of their stormwater is treated before it's discharged, because it all goes into the green treatment basins that we've installed there. In fact, the green treatment basins there are so high-tech, because we've chosen to make them that way, that the countywide program has installed sampling devices in there right now, because they're trying to determine the efficacy and the effectiveness of our programs compared to other people's.
That's right. You know, I have a question.
Please, go ahead. So, I mean, we can close the public comment if you want, and then we can go into, but go ahead.
All right, well, so Carolina, I'm just curious, you know, as a, you know, public entity, you know, Calsters, you know, they, they own these properties in the industrial park. I'm curious, do they pay property tax?
They are charged, they are, the owners are charged a property tax, owners of the buildings.
Owners of the building?
Yeah.
Okay, so even though Calsters is a public entity, they, they still pay property tax like other, like Prologis, for example?
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. I'd have to double-check if that's a, there's specific fees that some pay, and then there's some exemptions for others that I'd have to check, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think there are some exemptions...
Yeah.
For them. I know that, you know, there was a complaint about, you know, passing on the, the expenses to their, their tenants, and maybe that might be a burden, but I think they make it up in other ways, too. So, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for that question.
So, should we go ahead and close the public hearing, or did, I saw one of our people in the audience that looked like they wanted to speak again.
Yeah.
Would, you'd, you'd want to come up to the podium, or, or we won't catch you on the tape.
Okay. I just had a few things that I missed. So we do have our biannual catch basin program that we do for all 11 buildings. We do maintain those. Calsters, yes, we are a public entity, and we are exempt, however, we do have, like, Prologis does pass on all of their real estate taxes onto their tenants, too. So with, as far as Calsters goes, we, it's a post-ary note that we, that our tenants get billed. To add on to that for them, I have tenants like AMS Beacons at 444 Valley Drive. They are small mom and pop. They knew that when they signed the lease, that they would be paying upon, you know, these, these notes. They also know if they were to go down the road and lease from Prologis, that that would be a triple net expense that they would have to capture as well. So regardless, the tenants get hit with this more than anything, so it makes it difficult for us to do business in the city of Brisbane, especially with leasing, when they know there's extra fees. And they, if there's a difficulty with, you know, if there's a certain difficulty with getting them into the building, yeah, they're, we're having a hard time filling our buildings. So it's making hard, you know, it's, it's a hard time for a lot of us to be able to do business. So our concern is we just want a fair assessment, so, thank you.
I have a question for staff.
Sure. Why don't we clo, go ahead and close the public hearing? Can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's...
So, obviously, this is something that's across our county, right? So are you aware of other cities have, having similar fees? Because, I mean, let's say you want to move out of Brisbane, and you want to go to South City Industrial District, are you gonna encounter a similar fee there?
That, that's a great holistic question that I've been wanting to answer. So, but first of all, let me, let me suggest that if you wanted to talk about what rental rates are as a result of the fees there, I think Mitch Bull would probably be the best person to answer that question for us, so I would defer to him, but, but I, I do want to touch a little bit on the comparators that have been suggested, because the argument seems to be that because other entities do it differently, ours must be wrong. And I, I have a little trouble with that argument, because they pick cities that are significantly different in size than us. You pick San Leandro, you pick South San Francisco, they have different opportunities to leverage, they have different things that they can bring to bear that we don't. And, and one of the things the, the argument conveniently dismisses is the really, really significant development of fees that these other cities charge. So look at South San Francisco and see what their development fees are. They've got a dozen that we don't charge. Let's just pick one for comparison, just out of sheer boredom, okay? So they have a traffic impact fee, $30 a square foot for a building, okay? $30 a square foot. Now that's a one-time fee, okay? It's a one-time fee. And we look at the fee we're proposing, it's $0.2. So let me do some math here, okay? Try and do it on my head. So let's say, but because we're charging for the building and the impermeable area, to make it fair, it's $0.4 versus $30 a square foot, okay? We're charging ours annually. To get our one fee matched up to their one fee, discounting the other 11, we would have to charge it for 750 years in a row to get it equal. And, and if you look at Prologis' building right now, they're doing it 3745, it's about 100,000 square feet. If they'd been in South San Francisco developing that, they would have paid a $30 per square foot. It would have been a $3 million one-time charge to do, we don't charge them that. So I, I think to just focus in on this one thing and say, oh, that makes it really difficult to do business in Brisbane, i- is missing the bigger picture of things and the expenses that happen in other cities. Thank you.
Also, I'd love to know from Carolina, because we talked about this kind of in budget business license fees, do you have any idea about how the city of Brisbane compares in terms of business license fees with other neighboring cities? Are we comparable, or how does that measure up?
We are comparable when it comes to the methods of, of charging business fees, in the sense of, like, whether they're headquarters, gross sales, things of that nature. And, and then it's, we do have to look at the types of businesses that we charge fees for, so there's room to explore there. But as, as far as the current rates that we use for, in comparison to, to local... i- in comparison to, to local, um, agencies, we are competitive.
Okay, thanks.
So, so I'd like to say that seven or eight years ago, when I was on CCAG, there was quite a bit of discussion about the, this fee, the, the National Storm Preventative, where the state keeps adding more requirements for the city to, to deal with and to fund. But they found, they didn't really have a method to recapture those fees for the city. At that time, every different community and all the cities in CCAG had different methods. And I believe at that time, our fee per year, we were out of pocket $79,000 um, for the stormwater, and it might have been more like 10 years ago. And now we're at half a million dollars over that we're paying in stormwater fees. Um, and we're still funding the majority of that from our general fund. So Burlingame, I know, has a stormwater fee on every property. When you go to do a remodel, you go to build anything, they have a stormwater fee that they tack on. And when you're doing a million dollar remodel on your private home, you may be paying five or $10,000 in those fees. And so in the big picture of a million dollar remodel, it may not come as a shock that you're paying that stormwater fee, but you're paying it, and you're paying it forward. So it's covering it down the road, hopefully. Um, so I think we're just playing catch-up here. And we're trying to recover some of what the state has imposed on us. And this is something that we've worked out that, um, every resident in Brisbane pays this on their property tax at the current time. We've done a lot of work on the higher streets where we have runoff to do catch basins. We've done that voluntarily. Uh, we have a stormwater catchment basin here on this property for the water running off of this property and off of our parking lot. And, and the library, we have a water retention system. And, and it's all things that we're doing to do the public good, but it also is to cover the costs of doing business that the state imposes. So I think that how they've figured this and the cost impact per property is fair. And we've done it the best we can. I think that it's part of doing business and.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with you, Terry. You know, the, the reason I brought up the property tax thing is that, you know, all the buildings, they, they, they pay their tax, most of them, right? And that money goes into the general fund, and then we use that money to make our community better, right? Fire, police, public works. This is no different, right? The, the city, you has its fair share of, of, uh, um, landmass that we can't absorb into the ground, right? And so we cover that. And so Randy has laid out a very fair and detailed, um, I mean incredibly detailed, you know, way of analyzing what is the fair share for the commercial entities. And so it's about our community, all working together, paying their fair share to make our overall community healthier. And so I wish we would have done this earlier, but, uh, you know, hey, it's now, and, um, it's the right thing to do. So I, I'm in full support of moving forward with this.
And I, I have one extra comment to make on that. And we can't just keep taking money out of the general fund, which is the taxpayers' money. So the taxpayers are already paying for this on our property taxes, as the mayor has said, um, and I'm ready to move forward with it as well.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. Um, I, I think that what we've come up with is very fair. Um, and, you know, when we talk about doing business in Brisbane, we have basically no impact fees. That's another area in which, you know, I think we're very welcoming to businesses. There's a lot of, aside from what, um, Randy mentioned, there's a lot of fees that we don't charge. Um, and I think that, you know, with respect to leasing, there is, I think, a, a difficulty that's shared in many markets, not just in the Brisbane market. Um, and it speaks to what's going on in the economy and with businesses in general. Not necessarily that Brisbane is an unfriendly place to do business. I think it's, it's just what's happening in the marketplace. Um, and I think with respect to other local markets, Brisbane is actually faring pretty well, um, with our lease, leasing rates at, in Crocker, last I checked. Um, so, you know, after speaking to several businesses about this, once they kind of understood how the fee was derived, the calculations, what it goes for, many of those businesses said, hey, you know, we're, we're cool with this. And so, um, based on our discussion tonight, my conversations with businesses, and how thorough we've been in the way that we've come up with these calculations, I think this is fair, and I would like to move forward.
I don't really have a whole lot to add. I, I really like what Councilmember Lynn said. I like what Councilmember Cunningham said, our esteemed mayor, and also Councilmember Davis. I think there's a certain cost of doing business as a city. And if anything, we've been remiss at times where we absorb costs, and then when we say, we can't do this anymore, people get upset. And I understand why they get upset, but it's a, it's a fiscal reality. And we've had budget shortfalls the past couple of years because of COVID and revenues being down, and push comes to shove. We still have city services that both businesses and residents benefit from. We provide a wonderful place to live and a wonderful place to do business. And it comes at a cost, no matter where you are in the Bay Area. And I think, um, what's being proposed is not exorbitant, it's very fair. It's been well thought, and I'll make a motion that we move ahead on it.
Second.
Okay, um, it doesn't look like I have to read anything special, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we get to go forward. It moves us to the fun part of our meeting. I think we're ready for staff reports.
Old business?
Actually, you got the master pay schedule?
Oh, it was staff report, darn. Okay, old business.
We could save a tremendous amount of money by not approving it.
Consider adopting a resolution to amend the master pay schedule.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor O'Connell and members of the council. Per Calper's requirement, staff would like to read into the record the following executive management bargaining group's new hourly rate. After receiving a 6% increase effective the first payroll period in July 2024, confidential management currently filled positions. At top step per hour, our finance director at $115.49 and human resources director at $113.35. Executive management currently filled positions at top step per hour are assistant to the city manager at $92.48, city clerk at $74.83, community development director at $116.72, parks and recreation director at $111.29 and public works director at $136.64. Lastly, police chief at, at top step is $136.19 per hour. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Nope.
No. Karen?
No.
Okay. So I'll open it up for public comments. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
No hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, a motion to close the public comments.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion.
Madam Mayor, I'm ready to move forward. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to amend the master pay schedule.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You always get off so easy, Abby.
But she had to sit here.
Every time.
But she had to sit here for a long time.
I know. Well, that's, that's the price you pay.
Yeah. We should start being harder on Abby, I think.
I think so, yeah.
Let's just dream something up right now.
That's right.
So, uh, we're okay to move on to item T? Consider adoption of a resolution to initiate a test residential parking permit program on Thomas Avenue based upon results of outreach to residents. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. You can hear me fine? Sometimes I'm told you can't.
I can.
Sometimes I'm told I can't be heard very well.
Just gotta be close. Close.
I'll stay close. And not to belabor something that we've discussed many times before. You're all aware that there's a parking issue in Brisbane. Complete Street Safety Committee looked into that, made a recommendation. Council deliberated, came forward with a proposed program. We did outreach to residents on Tulare Street and Thomas Avenue, and we got strong support to do a program, a test program, on Thomas Street, but not on Tulare. We still got, um, votes trickling in after that staff report. So actually, if you, if we eliminated the deadline, we, we had 20 to 5 in favor on Thomas. So what we have before you tonight is a resolution to impose this trial program for six months, according to the letter that we sent out. I'm happy to answer any questions. We are working on setting up the recorded phone line for complaints and the web form where people can lodge complaints about people that are parking without a permit during the program hours.
So the phone line for complaints is a recorded line that gets listened to?
Daily.
Daily, before the end of the day?
I'll let, I'll let the department that's going to do that answer that.
Madam Mayor and council, um, it's a required line that actually transcribes the, um, message, and then it gets forwarded to certain staff members, which one would myself.
Nice.
Okay, great. Any council que- questions for council for staff?
You know, I do have a question for, for Mario. So, you know, we did, you know, at our last meeting where we discussed this, we, you know, we decided to move forward. Um, just gonna ask you straight up, I mean, do you, do you think this is gonna help alleviate the parking issues on, on Thomas?
I mean, I can answer that in terms of, you know, it's general, I mean, we, I mean, I believe that my understanding is vehicles that are, that we get called in on are 11, we call 1123 vehicles, which are vehicles that don't move. And this would initially, I mean, this would address vehicles that don't move. Um, and by getting permits for your cars, and if you can't, if you have more than one car, it's going to inventory that block so that vehicles that are getting called on repeatedly would come off of public property.
All right. And, and, and does this street, you know, typically get, you know, quite a few of those types of parked cars?
I don't think there's a specific street that gets more than others, but it's definitely gotten calls on that street.
Is, is, is fair share?
Yes.
Okay, okay, cool. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
No. Public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? I see no one in the audience. Do we have anyone online?
No hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then I will counsel discussion. Any discussion?
No.
No discussion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we pass the resolution to initiate test parking permit program on Thomas. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we get to go to staff reports.
There we go. Um, so we just have a couple of items. I won't read through this, but just to let you know, we are getting, um, we get periodic complaints from people in the community or concerns, I should say, with regards to coyotes. Um, they're here to stay, but, uh, there are certain things people can do to try to minimize, uh, the impacts, especially on small animals. Um, we are doing some additional signage on Quarry Road, try to educate people, and we will continue to do that. The next item, I'm actually going to turn over to the city clerk.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to continue with the committee updates for the vacancy?
Sure.
Madam Mayor, in front of, uh, and council in front of you are the applications I've received for the vacancies uh, in Complete Streets, Inclusion Diversity Equity and Accountability Committee, Open Space and Ecology Committee in the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District. So that's a total of, um, 11 applicants, and, um, waiting direction from council, when to schedule the meetings or any other direction that is the pleasure of the council.
So if we have 11 applicants that we need to interview, how much time do you, do you reckon we will need?
Around three hours.
Okay, so a full evening? Do you have any prospective dates that would work for the city clerk?
Um, if council wishes to meet with Council Cunningham before the 13th.
Oh, geez. That's not happening for me.
This coming week?
Next week.
I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm pretty booked.
I'm pretty booked, and that would not really give our applicants time to schedule their activities either. So I think we will have to wait until after Councilmember Cunningham's return. So.
And I will just make a public apology that I will be gone from the 13th to the 21st for a court hearing in Australia.
I'll also be away on vacation and won't be returning until the week of July 8th, and I could schedule it and do a doodle poll around that week.
So you're gone from when Karen's gone through, you're gone for two weeks?
When Karen returns, I'm gone until after July 4th weekend.
Karen, you only gone for a week?
I'm on the ground for five days.
For five days. Okay, so.
That's ugly.
It's ugly.
Yeah, no, for sure. So, but after June 20?
Uh, 21st I'm back.
Okay, so, I don't know, anytime in late June?
Well, she's just said she's out of town.
Oh, I think, oh, I'm sorry.
Till July 4th.
Till July 4th.
We'd have to do it, let's try to do it before our July 18th meeting. Is there a date that works, or could you send, send a poll out to us to see if there's a date in that realm that would work for us?
That sounds good. I'll send a doodle poll.
Pretty open that, that week.
And maybe if we could, maybe if we could start at 5:00 or 6:00 and we could get done a little earlier, if, if the date works and, and it's good for staff, I think that would be something that, and, and we get applicants that can come in, you know, more at 5:00 till 7:30, it might be able to help that.
Sounds good. We'll do.
Uh, we have public art on Monday the 15th, that's it, that I can see.
I think, I mean, I would prefer the week of the eights.
Got it.
So if we look at those dates.
I didn't bring my calendar with me, but, uh, uh, if we can, if we can.
We have a council meeting already. We have a council meeting already the week of the following week.
Have C tag on the 11th.
Okay, well...
That's my only thing.
Pretty flexible.
I'm more flexible than most, but... Okay, so we'll give directions to staff to corral us into a date for those meetings. And would we be able to, if it's a problem for some of the applicants, would they be able to participate via Zoom?
Yes, that could be an option as well.
Okay, just as an FYI to the applicants so that we can try to be as flexible as possible. It's always better to meet someone in person, but we would be open to a Zoom call. So that brings us to countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. I don't see anything that is on the list. Or did I miss something?
Yeah, there's...
I might have missed something. Oh, yeah, there is. Okay, Charter City and Election Issues Subcommittee from 5:13.
This was essentially reported out on already because we had our council meeting, which captured meeting Douglas and all the information that we got, you guys already got. So I don't feel like there's anything to report on that.
Fiscal and Administrative Policies Subcommittee, O'Connell and Cunningham, that was to review the budget presentation. We've done that, been there. And then there's an Economic Development Subcommittee for Cunningham and Lentz.
No, go ahead.
All right, so, yeah, so we met with staff and Mitch. Jeremy was also in attendance. So Mitch gave an update on economic development in our town, as well as a progress seminar report. And then we evaluated the Good Cities, I guess RFP, right? To evaluate potential economic development for the B of A property and also, you know, potentially looking at the village as well. Looking at the village property.
Oh, okay.
Nice.
Mm-hmm.
Cool.
Yeah, based upon guidance from the council.
For economic development?
For economic development, yes.
Okay. And anything else?
Would you like a PCE report?
Sure.
Yes.
We have seven minutes left.
It's very quick. It won't go in a lot of detail. We have contracts, PCE, for future clean energy. And a lot of those different facilities are delayed by interconnection problems, supply chain problems, grid problems, QSO problems. That being said, PCE has to go on the open market and buy power. And the problem that's been going on for the past two, three years is some months power's really sky high and sometimes it goes low. And you saw the PG&E increase for the first half of this year was 15%. It was formidable. So what PCE is trying to do, knowing that there's some delays, because when we have contracts, we're going to control the price for 15 to 20 years. But we're not there yet with the full power supply. So what we're trying to do is find creative ways so that instead of going up and down with power prices and customers not knowing what's going to happen with all of this, is to find a way, much like there are power companies where every month you're kind of paying a pretty similar rate. You kind of amortize it out. So this is the focus right now, finding creative ways to do that, keep the prices low because it's a nonprofit. We're not trying to fill pockets of shareholders. So that's it.
Great, well, thank you for your hard work on that committee. I know you're doing a lot.
Thank you.
She's amazing on that committee.
Okay, I had a airport roundtable meeting and we did discuss supersonic aircraft.
Oh, wow.
And the F, NASA is actually working on a program to do a test, well, they're building a test airplane, a one-seater, that they're going to test in different markets. Because when supersonic flies over land, it creates a sonic boom over the entire path it flies. So everyone under that plane will hear it at some level. Right now, they are illegal to travel in the US and in most of Europe over land because of that problem. But NASA and private entity really want to have supersonic travel. And they are working on a prototype for a jet that will create less of a boom. And then they're going to test it in different markets in different atmospheric conditions, whether it's... So they'll run, they're going to be running a month-long test in four different areas of the United States and then see how it's perceived by the people underneath the boom.
Oh, we're going in the guinea pigs?
I don't think we are going to be overflight material.
Good.
We're really lucky. I don't think we will be overflight material, but it is coming.
When do they think this is going to happen?
They believe that the actual flights are going to be late '25.
Oh, man.
So next year.
Okay.
There are also, and this report also talked about the, that the private sector is working on these supersonic jets regardless because they are fairly sure they will get passed through the SEPA, SEQA, NEPA kinds of approvals. And we will soon have supersonic, depending on how much money it costs to build these planes. And it will be sort of like the Lexus lanes going down the freeway. If you can afford to fly it, you want to fly it.
Yeah, sure.
The other thing that we did discuss was that San Francisco is going to be finished with their runway repairs earlier than they thought. They were planning to have it by the 1st of July. They will be completing it, I think, the 21st of June. So we should get back to more of a normal traffic pattern and less delays. They are back up to 98% passengers, but they're doing it with about 85% of the planes pre-pandemic. So they're bigger, heavier planes. They're crowding more people on them so that they can use larger aircraft, which happens to make more noise when it's late at night. But it's getting the same amount of people out of the airport. And that's the only report I can tell you about that. Does anybody have a question?
Yes, when you had your conversation about supersonic flights, did anyone bring up the Concorde and say, are we going backwards again? Was that brought up? As there were issues that they retired that whole fleet?
Well, that was 25 years ago.
So they think they have it, something about it?
They think they have a plane that will make, they equated the sonic boom of the Concorde to a car door slamming right next to you. And this is supposed to be the car door slamming at the neighbor's house.
And not over Brisbane?
Well, we don't know that. The test flights should not be over Brisbane just because they don't want that many people complaining to them for the Bay Area. It's probably not going to be a test flight in the Bay Area. Anyway, that's my report from San Francisco SFO Airport. Anything else? City clerk, did we receive any communications?
Yes, we received communication from Consino, proclamation, the California Warren Act notice from Sangamo, Bianchi, the NPDES fees, Dilworth removed from agenda. We received the memo from the Budget Department expenses. Last is vote no on ACA-1. Catalyst fact sheet. Dilworth rezoning for housing items Q and R and Kirsch removed to ordinances from the 6/6 meeting.
Great, thank you very much. That brings us to oral communications number two. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on an item that was not on our agenda tonight? Seeing no hands raised, do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I would like to adjourn in memory of Alex Reisman. And with that, order.